So, so we are starting our meeting. Sorry about the uh the disjointed start. Uh but our search consultants are here. And we'd like them to introduce themselves and then our process.
Hi, everyone. I'm John Grado and I live up Interstate eighty-nine, about three hours and across the lake over Plattsburgh. Um I've been working with McPherson and Jacobson Superintendent Search Consultants since two thousand fourteen. And I've done a number of searches, particularly I've done searches in um Burlington, Champlain Valley, Harwood, Windsor, and just down in Manchester, New Hampshire. Um my experience for being a superintendent search consultant is I was a superintendent schools in New York State for twenty-three years. Retired from that and became a professor of educational leadership, teaching principals and prospective superintendents at Virginia Tech for ten years. And uh now I occasionally do these superintendent searches, which is interesting work. Uh I figure that before as a superintendent, I was a principal for five years, so I have calculated that I've been to about seven hundred board of education meetings. So I I respect the work that you do. Uh thanks for doing the work. It's a lot of times, as you know, um it's work that you don't get a lot of credit for. You get you get uh people who are easy to criticize and slower to give you credit for the valuable work that you do, but I appreciate the work you do. So thank you and thanks for inviting us to talk with you.
Good. My name is Bob Ferguson. I live down in Branford, Connecticut right now. I did the search for Branford about a year and a half ago. Um I did about eighteen searches in California. Um I moved from Napa, California in a year and a half ago and we got tired of the fires and earthquakes and plus other things. Um I was also a superintendent in California, Santa Barbara, California, and then Northern California. Love what I do. Uh love being retired. Um but we really appreciate working. It's just sort of like the dating game. We try to match different personalities up with people. And we've been very successful. Uh the first and Jake's has been very successful in the process we use. Um eighty percent stay at least five years, which is great in for super. As you've been lucky to have it here for a long time, which is super. Uh we're looking forward to meeting the community, listening to the community and stakeholders and provide you as much information as possible to help you make a decision when you get to the superintendent.
So I want to walk through with you, Bob, and I want to walk through with you. Um first an overview of the process so that you will understand it, of course, and so that the public as well. So Roy, if you'd pull up that first chart of the timeline. That's it. Okay. All right. So here's what we're going to do tonight. There are six things that we'd like to accomplish with you. The most important one is identify qualifications for the new superintendent. That's essentially important so that we can advertise accordingly, and you'll soon see that we're going to advertise about the nation. But first, we have to know what we're advertising. So the board needs to identify the qualifications. And I'll bring you through a process in about ten minutes and I'll help you to do that. Then we want to talk about the calendar because I think, you know, you're all busy people, and I think it's important that you would lock in some dates on your calendar now so you can find other activities around them so you can get this search completed. Um I'm going to talk to you about advertising media and the dates. We need your contact information before you go so that we can send you some information along the way. Uh you'll need to discuss how you want to involve stakeholder groups in the process. It's your search. You know your community well. You know what your community might expect. Some communities say we're the board. We're going to select. Other communities say, no, it's really important that we have representatives from the teachers and the community and the and the parents and the students. Whatever you decide is okay with us. We just need to know what it is. And then we think that you ought to develop a brochure. Have you have you been working on that, Roy?
Yeah, this is still says what it looks like, something like this.
Yeah, so a little four-page brochure can really be a very useful tool to inform prospective candidates about the good things about your community, about the good things about your school district. Um you know, things that you might be proud of that your students are doing or your staff are doing. So it's really kind of an opportunity to tout for nice things about why would somebody want to come here to work and why would somebody want to come here to live? And in fact, I've done a number of searches and a lot of times at the end of the search, um I found that school districts will give these brochures to real estate agents. And they're really nice to attract people to the community. So we've given you a number of samples, but of course personalize it to your district.
Can I just add one thing? This is where you do the qualifications on this side as you're going to be doing. Um we ask the candidates to write to what you say. So we want the candidates to be very specific in their background knowledge. Like if you have issue with special ed, we want them in their letter to talk about their background with special ed. So it's not like a general letter to twenty-five different superintendent opening. It's specifically for your district from a candidate specifying what you want in your new candidate.
Absolutely right. We don't have a generic application. The application will be respond to the qualifications that the board has set. All right. So let's look at the middle of that page. Uh here's where we're going to advertise the position starting on next Monday, the fifteenth. The thirty days in the American Association of School Administrators, top school jobs from Education Week, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, McPherson and Jacobson website. Those five sites are all national sites that we're going to advertise the position for a little bit more than a month. And Roy, if you help us, we'll put it on School Spring here, which is kind of a New England-based search area. So you can see that's going to be nationally advertised, and we're going to say that the deadline to apply is Monday, February nineteen.
I might mention that our website gets, I think it's four or five thousand hits a month.
Yeah.
I mean, a tremendous amount of activity on our website. We're doing jobs all through the country.
Yeah. All right. Keep paging down a little bit, please, Roy. Now, part of the process is to get information from the stakeholders. So Roy has helped us to schedule meetings. Bob and I, we will be meeting tomorrow with the administrators, and then we're going to record a video for students, uh explaining the process and how they can add input into the process. Uh we're going to ask everyone the same four questions. What makes your school district or what makes your community an attractive place to learn? What makes your school district attractive for students and staff? What are the issues that the new superintendent will face? And uh what qualifications would you like to see in your new superintendent? So that'll be that'll be the questions that we ask the administrators, the superintendent, the central office staff, uh the teachers. So you can see that we've got a meeting scheduled all day tomorrow and half of Wednesday to meet with those stakeholders. And that'll give us a good amount of feedback now. Go ahead, Bob.
I just and when we finish with all this data, um we'll do a report that comes to use the board. Uh usually the board puts it online for the committee to look at, and we also give it to the finalists. And this has everything that's given to us. We don't take anything out of it. Now, if there's a foreign word, it might not be appropriate. We might be a little bit, but we take every single comment down because part of this process also, we have an online survey, which is confidential. In fact, uh you've helped me us tomorrow. We're doing a do a thing for students, and students are going to give a lot of input. And they can do it at home on their own. Sometimes when you're by yourself confidential, you tend to put down some things that maybe are maybe personal at times. We put it in here. We want you to see what everybody says in the community. We want the new uh candidates also see what's in there too.
In the same survey, those same four questions will be on an online survey for two weeks. And we're going to put it in English, Spanish, and Portuguese on your website. Okay, keep going, please. That's when the survey will be January ninth through the twenty-third. Right now, here this information in red. This is what we need you to agree upon.
Hopefully.
Oh, I mean, I'm suggesting Monday, February twenty-sixth, that we meet with you to review the applicants, to help you select candidates to be interviewed, to help you select interview questions, finalize the interview procedures. You need to decide on a compensation package. You need to decide on how you're going to involve stakeholders. And we can help you set up a daily interview schedule. Now, you recall that the deadline for applications is the February nineteenth. So that that week, the intervening week between the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, Bob and I are going to read the applications as they come in. And we're going to um examine them against the criteria that you have identified. So on the twenty-sixth, we'd like to meet with you and we'd like to share all the candidates with you, everyone who applied. And we like, we're going to give you information. Um where's the person live? What's the person's current position? Are they certified as a superintendent in Vermont? Uh what's their previous experience? And would we recommend that you take your hand to interview them or not? And what's our rationale for that recommendation? So then that will help you to make a decision about who you want to interview. So that week's time will give us time to do that. Now, of course, we're going again, we're going to be reading these applications as they come in, but in a week's time, we'll have, we'll be able to narrow that down to who we think are the top candidates and do a bit of reference checking on them so that on the twenty-sixth, we can give you some good informative recommendations.
Couple of things. We do a lot of vetting too. One of the strengths of our district, of our district, ex-supervisor of our of our company is that we do a lot of in-depth vetting. And we make the assumption that the letters of recommendation are usually pretty positive. Not many people ask a letter recommendation that's going to be negative, but we actually want to do some really thorough searching, find out exactly who this person is. Um and then both of us, we're both sort of the same type of people. We like to do things in person. So one or both of us will be here. Um Zoom is great, but sometimes Zoom doesn't work real well. So we like to do it more in person to sort of answer questions too. So one of us or both of us will be here to help you with that process.
So is Monday, the twenty-sixth of February, a doable date for you?
I mean, the only thing to know about February is the week before that is the school break. And I'm probably the only one. Yeah, I will not be here because my kids are on school break.
That's that week of school break?
It's the week before. It's the week of the nineteenth is the school break.
But you'll be back the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, look at your calendar before I I came up with these dates.
I'm guessing probably about a two or three hour meeting.
Yes.
At that most.
Probably two hours.
Two hours.
Yeah.
In the evening, I feel.
Uh it's up to you. Whatever you want. We'll do. We work for you.
So we do a six again. That was
Yeah.
Six to eight. Okay, then let's
There's a reason I have a secretary who takes care of my calendar. I don't think this way, but anyway.
Okay. All right. So then after you meet with the or after you decide who to interview, um then you need to decide how do you want your interviews to take place? Our our suggestion is that the board decides the five to seven people that they want to interview. And then if it's your choice, you can involve stakeholder groups and interview in those five to seven people. What what is, what are your thoughts about involving stakeholders in the interview process?
Can I ask one dumb question?
No question.
Why would we entertain interviewing a non-certified person?
You wouldn't, except except that the person is highly qualified. So when people applied, we're going to write them an email response to say, thanks for applying. If you are not yet currently certifying Vermont, here's the link to the Vermont Education Department so that you can apply for certification. So if you find or if we say, hey, this person is really well qualified and and is in the process of getting the certification, then you might want to interview that person.
So this is like a superintendent in Minnesota. And in Vermont, okay.
See, one of the things about the department of that right now, and I'm going to say this candidly, right now Vermont had, well, I I shouldn't say right now. At the beginning of the school year, Vermont had six hundred provisionally licensed educators. And that was from special educators to superintendents. It's possible for a person to get a provisional license. The question becomes, you know, like, you know, our consultants shared with us, if this person walked on water and this is the person we really want and has been certified in another state or two, in some cases, three, then the likelihood of that person, you know, getting through the process here in Vermont is strong.
Yeah.
You know, there's no reciprocity, but there's, you know, there's not a lot of separation.
Right. And and to add to that, if if they apply, you know, February twenty-fifth or whatever, uh or excuse me, by February nineteenth, they've got plenty of time to get certified. So if they're serious about the job, they are going to be certified because we're going to state very unequivocally, you must be certified to hold the position. So they'll get out.
You know, related to this. Hypothetically, very, very stretched hypothetical. Turns out the president of a really major university in Boston, whose name starts with H, just got fired. She's available. She really wants to get away from the world, to go to a rural community. Got no public education experience. It's all non-public, et cetera. Would we be considering somebody like that? Extraordinarily good leader there.
We're going to bring you every person that we think is capable of doing the job. Occasionally, kind of non-traditional candidates have some good experience.
Some some districts have hired ex-governors, ex-military people, um ex-political people.
Right.
Um again, it depends on you, the board, and the community. So what do I think?
That's what I was trying to glean. And and that's that's up to Harvard.
Okay.
Yeah, it's your choice. That's up to us collectively as a community to decide, you know, and Sarah.
I was just gonna say with the question on the table, which is the board and stakeholder groups, I personally feel really strongly that it should extend beyond the board. I feel like there should be a parent. There should be at least a couple of staff members like my, I just think that those interviews should be as diverse as the community is my
Let me ask you a question.
Roy put it together.
No, 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 that's up to to the stuff.
You want to do
No, I did, but I thought Roy would.
No, I he would help us get those folks.
Okay.
Okay, as far as the final, you know, piece, that's still up to us to kind of determine.
Tagging what Sarah said, um do you want the interviews to be in collaboration with the board and community members at the same time? Or some people do a separate community input and a separate board input?
See, that just having done this here before, the process, we did form a stakeholder group. And ours was pretty extensive. Uh and we've had discussions even, you know, amongst the board about the size of that group as it might, it seemed unwieldy, but we pulled it off. And it was very clear who the representatives were. And I think I shared that, you know, that old, you know, spreadsheet. And that was everybody that, you know, we felt, and I would think that that hasn't changed. You know, when you look at that, you know, there were parents, there were teachers, there were administrators, there was staff, there were students, you know, I mean, everybody was there that needed to be there to give us a good um snapshot. Now, the question that we're being posed with is the step. Do we have that community stakeholder group go through the process first? And bring to the board their top three, let's say, or two? And, you know, because that's that's what happened, you know.
No, go ahead. Can I just add one thing there? Um I'd be somewhat careful of having the the community rank order.
Me too.
Because you make the decision. And what we would do is is have each, the committee group would interview, let's say, five people. We would take the notes down of what they think are strong, areas of concern, and give that to you. It's one more piece of data. We want the committee to know that, no, they don't tell the board to interview. They help the board make the decision of who to interview. So I'd be careful in the rank order. Be that be concerned.
I I I should have, you know, clarified, you know, myself, but point well taken. They didn't.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I
And that wouldn't be, you know, advisable either. Uh but if was in collaboration and it worked really well.
Yep.
As far as the community.
Yeah, let me add to that. If you ask the committee in rank order, you're going to sit damned if you do, damned if you don't situation.
Yeah.
Somebody, the administrators might like somebody else, the community might like somebody else, and they're all going to malign you if you don't pick their choice. So
You know, that's it. And I'm I'm with you a hundred. We didn't do that the last time.
Yeah. Well, I have a form that I that I can give to those stakeholder groups. And basically the form asks, what do you like about this candidate? What don't you like about this candidate? What do you wish you had more information about? That is information for the board members to help make a final decision.
Yeah.
And I was just mentioning um that we, I was on the town manager search committee and our our job, they, the slate board asked us to put forward a recommendation of at least three candidates. So we weren't, we didn't give
A slate.
Yes. So we did give our feedback on why can't, what what the strength, what we felt like the top strengths and weaknesses were for each one, but there was no ranking. It was like we would recommend you interview at least these four people, right?
That's perfect.
So that's
See, that's and that's what happened the last time.
It's a good process.
Right. So so I think in being that that was the same process, you know, the town used this time, and it was successful. That's the process we used when we hired.
Well, and you you obviously and we obviously want the community to feel that they have part of this process, that they had input. So it wasn't simply done by you by closing closed doors. This was an open process, but open input that they feel this is our search, not just the board's search. This is our community. This is our school district. This is our superintendent. That's a key thing. And and the more you do that, and you're doing it exactly the right way, the more you do that, the more people feel involved and connected to the district.
Right. And my concern is, is this whole board probably has heard me say this a hundred times. A a lot of people don't even realize what we, the board, do.
No, they don't.
Or can do or can't do. And they're going to be in that same light. And especially from this past previous years, we've had a couple of
Yep. I understand.
Conflicts there. Uh that's what the superintendent is supposed to do or is able to do or we expect him to do or legally he can or cannot do or she. And so that's still somehow I would feel better if we had some kind of guidelines for that committee that are not us board members who know. But for Joe Citizen out here, now you know that he can't do this or this or this, or she can do this or this or this, or she's going to be responsible.
We can help you with that.
Is that
We can help you with that.
Yeah, good, because I really think that's important, especially for our town right now. Am I right? No, I I mean, we had a charge. The town manager search committee had a straight up like Yeah. horrible charge.
And the thing is, the charge was very similar when we hired Tony.
Yeah.
Right down to, you know, confidentiality statements, you know, they didn't share information
Yeah.
with, you know, that the consultants shared with them, you know, it was it was that exacting.
In fact, we will ask you for the names and emails of people on your stakeholder committee. And we will have them sign a confidentiality form. Otherwise, they cannot participate.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's good. We know that sometimes it isn't all true. That they may, usually, you know, usually union members especially will call a district that this person was in and call their union there. And we typically don't do that, but we know that happens sometimes.
It would. You parent, I would would.
Yes.
It happens for you, sir.
Okay, so I'm hearing that you'd like stakeholder involvement.
Yes.
Yeah. The next question is, how do you choose who is involved? Have you given that thought?
Well, what what we did, what we did last was, you know, we put out a request, you know, um and you know, then once we had, you know, let's say, a list of of folks, you know, if we're saying we want three, 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 whatever that magic, you know, like number is to look like.
Again, merely a suggestion.
Yeah.
You you to make the decision. Suggestion would be that, like with the union, you allow the union to pick the people they want.
Right.
You know.
Well, that's what they
So that that that's perfect. That as long as they feel they have to put in that.
Right.
You decide groups, the numbers you want. That's fine. And let the individuals is determine who they want to come represent them.
Yeah, especially when it's a designated stakeholder group.
Exactly.
So like if it's the office here, there's ten, twelve people in the office. Who do you want representing us, you know, in that group?
Yeah, I I agree with Bob on that and you on that, Kevin, because you can't have a group of twenty-five or twenty. I I would suggest that you might consider your teachers association, your administrators association, your support staff association, maybe your PTA, your PTO, whatever you have, and ask them, ask the presidents of each of those to identify three group, three people to represent their group. Three people who probably live in the school district, as it were, in New Hampshire. And then then you've got
Site administrators, students. It's your choice.
Yeah.
So Roy, do you do you have that that chart handy?
All right, Andy. Well, we don't need to decide that tonight.
No, well, because I was just going to say C, because it's pretty, it's pretty descriptive. You know, and when I was looking at the data that you supplied around those groups, it it's it's right on a line. It's it's really
Yeah, if you end up with a dozen people or so, that's pretty representative of the district. A dozen people whom they choose to represent them.
Yeah, I would say ten to twelve is probably a good number.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So we can help you then. So we'll meet you on the twenty-sixth. And then that will help you to decide who to interview. Now, again, might be five people, might be seven people. We'll see. And then the stakeholder groups will interview those people and give you feedback. You can interview those people. And then you have your own opinions. You have the stakeholders' opinions. Then you can narrow that down to two or three finals that you want to interview more closely.
John, can I add one more thing? Um keep in mind that that may be a lengthy process over a week and may may take two days, may take three or four hours per day to do that. Depends on how many people we want to interview. Um so usually interviews last an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. There's some time in between. Um it could be, it could be a a long day, a couple of days, but end result is more time you put in there, the better it is at the end of the result.
Yeah.
What is the balance of of people who come in for that first interview versus digital? I'm just curious because like if you're low, if you're in the state, would we say everyone needs to do it vis digitally to like even the playing field or do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah. 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 I think you can decide that better when you see the candidates and how much money you want to spend. But I'm serious because, you know, if you've got a candidate from Vermont or across the river, no big deal, somebody can get here. If you've got a candidate from Minnesota, you might do that and be a zoom and then decide, is that person from Minnesota? Uh how they skilled the person enough that we're going to bring him or her in.
Oh, sure, for the final, final. Of course, those will be in person. I was just curious if you
It could be a blend.
You made them even.
It can be a blend.
It can be a blend.
It can be a blend. Again, you tell us what you want to do, but it could be a blend. Somebody who maybe lives, let's say, in in Wyoming, who used to live in Connecticut, now is in Wyoming, that might be something that might be of interest or in Vermont, who knows? Um it's up to you.
Okay. Cool. Yeah.
In this process, um I personally would like to see the finalists interact with students. I want to see them. I've managed nurses for years. They can come in, do their interview. Select is best thing you could ask for in the world, but you you put them in the out in the elements with the staff, in this case, children. Well, and they evaporate. And and for me, this this is a critical issue. I want visibility. I want communications. I I mean, I guess they're going to be in the office because they've got stuff to do. But their world is over there, and that's where I want to see it. And and it's going to take on a unique person, not
So
See, see, one of the, one of the things that uh, you know, we've done uh at our administrator level hiring, utilizing the same process, you know, for our higher level administrators. They actually do a demonstration day, you know, where they're in the building, you know, with the kids with a very specific task. You know, and and that's that's what Doug's getting at. We even did that when we hired at the state level with some folks and people said like, we never did that before. And it's like, duh, and you wonder why we have problems. But but the thing is, I think that experiential patience is important. You know, and with the feedback sheets, because at the end of the day, we got feedback from the students, you know, and the, you know, the parents and the teachers that were part of this little, you know, experiment. You know, and the, you know, the parents and the teachers that were part of this little, you know, uh, experiment.
You may wanna do, get down to the three finals, I'd say. That may, we incorporate some sort of activity. With people or students that, that could be part of the interview day.
Yeah, in fact, as we look at that week of March eighteen. Exactly, we, we probably wanted to have full day interviews. And then it's gonna take some scheduling coordination, but you might have. Candidate meet with the students at this time and meet with the administrators another time, meet with the teachers another time, meet with the board in the evening, brought to dinner. Then have an evening thereafter at the dinner. And then that gives you the type of feedback that you're seeking. Yes, I, I mean, I, I wanna see them interact with. K through. And I wanna see them interact with some kids. Eighth, ninth. And then some juniors or seniors. Because the interactions should change with each one of them. And also I wanna see them, how they interact with the special needs children specifically.
We're very special to that group of kids.
And then as a parent, I was a parent during the principal search that they're, the most recent one we did. And like going in that evening and having those principals each give kind of a, an interactive situation that parents would have. Be engaged in, you know what I mean? Was like incredibly valuable. I had no leadership position in the school district at the time. I was just there as a parent. And being there as like. These three people are gonna represent my kid's school. One of these three people is gonna represent my kid's school. And being able to give that feedback was like, I, I think incredibly valuable people as well. And he, they're gonna keep, this new person is gonna call me at five o'clock in the morning. And tell me that the, there's no school today because of the snow or whatever, like, they're gonna interact with me as a mom. As, as much as they might interact with, more than they might interact with my child.
Good point.
Yeah, so all that can be scheduled. But takes some coordination, schedule it, but it can be scheduled. Yeah, and by the way, there is no dumb question, so. Keep asking questions.
Oh, you'd be mad amazed if we can.
Their, their lead-in question. Alright, so let's look at those dates again. We're suggesting that the week of March eleventh that you. That you and the stakeholder groups conduct interviews of the semifinals. Can you put that on your calendar? That may mean three or four nights for you.
Nothing moved.
It's right after town meeting day. I just wanna, I don't know where that comes in and reorg meetings and those.
Let me, let me ask a question in terms of your personal lives. Can you do like three o'clock in the afternoon meetings, so maybe six, or would you rather do evenings?
Three of us still actively work. Two of us don't. We work, but not for a job.
But six o'clock is a good time.
That's a whole another adventure.
Five o'clock can work easily.
Maybe five, five to eight, would that be something?
I can make that work on most days. Uh, there are some days where I'll have the slip out of work. Uh, cause there's a meeting scheduled, but most days I can.
We can coordinate that, like, yeah. Well, I don't tend to have for many, but they, they happen.
Alright, so then if you interview the semifinalists the week of March eleventh. Then we're suggesting that you turn around in the week of March eighteen to interview two or three finals. Now typically. Again, you can do this however you wish, but typically we suggest a full day interview. And that could consist of maybe one of you, or maybe the president of the chamber of commerce, or somebody that you identify. Drives the candidates around the district, shows them places of worship, shows them the schools, shows them where the shop, shows them the medical facilities. So that the person and the spouse are comfortable living here. That's really important, cause the spouse is not happier than, you're not gonna have happy.
It looks there very long.
And then that's followed up with more interviews with the stakeholder groups, more interviews with students, more interviews with the. Teachers or support staff or administrators that they may wanna follow up on from the first interview.
Or they may not. They may simply say, okay, we had our input. You guys bet.
I personally think. That by the time it gets to the two to the three. It's us. It is not at that point shared anymore. Because for both, both legal and other reasons, that is our responsibility.
Yes, it is.
That's pretty simple.
Uh, I certainly believe that at that point, once we're getting down to two to three. They're interviewing us just as much as we're interviewing them.
And they may have lots of multiple jobs also.
Yes, they may have lots of offers or whatever. Because. Like a marriage, if both sides aren't going into it fully committed, it's not gonna work, cause it's too damn hard.
And part of our job too, as you get down to the three finalists, we maintain really close contact with those three, keep them here. Keep them involved. Uh, we don't want them straying the district. We want them focused on this district as their number one choice.
Okay, so are those dates doable for you? Okay, terrific. Um, one thing before we leave that page. Number five under February twenty-sixth, decide on a compensation package. We can help you with that maybe by finding what salaries are throughout the state. But that doesn't necessarily mean much, because you're in competition for quality people. So, I don't know what you're paying your superintendent now, but I'd suggest that you pay something in that same ballpark, even though you have a guy with thirteen years of experience. You're looking for the best candidate you can find, and chances are, when we get down to two or three, those people will be. Talented people in the mix in other places.
Yeah, we usually do a range. We don't tell that range. We're gonna offer you two hundred and ten thousand. We do a range. Um, I just finished, I said the job in Branford and the board president. Being a very strong Republican, wanted to minimize the cost. And so he said, I'm not paying more than this. Well, the person that he wanted. Was about thirty-five thousand dollar higher. He said, we want it, let's do it. So, he changed his mind when he saw the candidate, and that's up to you. If you see somebody that really is worthwhile. Five or ten thousand dollars is minimal over a three or five year period of time.
So. I'm willing to do the, decide on range early. I'm not willing to decide on actual compensation.
That'll be for you, when you find the person.
Yeah, and, and we have. There's a lot of. Factors that play into that, you know.
It was wrong.
Do you know if they're paying your current superintendent?
Two hundred and fifty-four.
Are there ballpark range?
It's in the one seventy range.
Like one sixty-eight?
You know. It wasn't too bad.
Well, that's kinda just isn't floating around.
That's because of the, you know, with the medical packages.
Well, people are going to call us. At least they've called me in the search that I'm feeding this thing. They're gonna call me and they're gonna say, what's the salary for this job, before they even decide to apply or not.
Well, that was my question, is it published? Cause that's.
Because it is, it's, it's in the budget, you know.
I mean, in the job description, is the range published in that? Okay, good. Well, I won't apply for a job that doesn't have a salary posted in it.
You know, the number one question the candidate asked. Tell me about the board. If they ask about the salary first, to me, that's strike one. But they ask about, tell me about the board, tell me about the candidate. Oh, and by the way, what's the salary range?
So they clearly are going to want to know whether or not the salary is sufficient. For support of the lifestyle.
And the cost of living in this area.
The cost of living and all of that. That said. If they're motivated enough by the salary alone, that, that becomes determinative. I don't want them.
Well, that, that's part of the story. The other part of the story is some of these people are, might already be making more than.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever it is, the fact is, as you well know. There is a salary rate range that a community can afford. Uh, and this is not the crusty old Republican speaking, it's just. A person who looks at reality and there is a.
There is a fiscal reality.
But, but we'll, we'll, we'll get that, you know, just checking that jacket and get the detail.
Well, let me ask you this question. Would you be comfortable with a range of? Ten thousand below and ten thousand above what your current superintendent's making?
You know, that's, that's fine.
I said, I don't have a problem with all setting a range. And I even have. Quite frankly. Depending on what happens. We have secondary conversations on it. But. It's not finalized until it's. The person. We got, okay, but it's Joni. Joni is the person. What does it take to get Joni in? How, how does that fit in with everything else?
We will ask for your current superintendent's contract, so we have that to see.
Yeah, but, um. At the same time, if they're doing it for the money, they're doing it for the wrong reasons.
You're not in education for the money.
We had a, a meeting that was rather divisive a little earlier this month, or last month. And, uh, somebody suggested I was doing this for the money. I laughed out loud and they thought I was laughing at them. It wasn't that I was laughing at them. None of us do this for the money.
Well, maybe Roy.
Thank you for your, for the dates that helps us out here.
Okay, so anything on this calendar before we leave this page and want another topic? Roy, have you got that all down?
I'm gonna have to actually take it home and.
It's, it's.
Reviewed by mine.
A- actually, we have a doc. You know, the, the date doc, and we'll just circulate that to the board.
Thank you. Those, those items I had put in red, we had not yet decided, but now we have decided upon. So good. Alright, so let's talk about the characteristics of a new superintendent. And. Um, and help focus, we've got a six-step process here. It's called the nominal group technique. So let me. Walk you through this before I put you to work. The first step is the silent generation of ideas. And you should have a piece of paper on a pen, and the question is. If you could find a superintendent who walked on water, who has everything that you would want in a new superintendent. What characteristics, what qualifications would that person have? And that's hopefully gonna help us winnow down those qualifications to five. So we're, we're beyond, whether they've got the emasses, their doctor. Well, I mean.
We're talking about the person.
The person.
Well, maybe, maybe it's really important to you that somebody has a doctor. Maybe it isn't, but if you think it is important, then put that down. Oh, wow, I'll tell everybody right up front. I'd love to see somebody here with a PhD. Okay, you can put that down. Because the next step is, I'm gonna ask you to. All share your ideas and I'll type them so you can put them up on the screen. And you'll see everybody's ideas. And then the next step is we clarify and combine. You know, maybe you say something that's not clear and somebody wants clarification on it. Or maybe three of you say the same thing, so we'll combine those into one idea. Then the next step is you all have five sticky notes. And I'm gonna say, okay, out of those fifty qualifications or so that you've come up with, what are your top five? And that'll help us to winnow down the characteristics that you want in your superintendent. And that'll help us to then identify the top criteria that we will put in a brochure, put on the webpage, and.
Then we'll wordsmith it into this document. We'll send it to your board chair, whoever, and review it, make sure it's okay. And then that'll be what's gonna be in the correct criteria for the reference.
Yeah. Did you see the brochures that we did from other districts? Did you see those? They all ended up with something like Bob just showed you. Bob's qualifications or something. Okay, so here's the process. First step. We'll take. Five minutes or whatever it takes, write down your characteristics of your ideal superintendent.
Six foot six, two hundred and forty pounds. I already sent it to. Roy, so he's got it.
Wayne, do you have the one we did for the town too? Cause that might help just with, um. Background, community background.
Just, just examples of. What, what you're, it's gonna look like. Can we, we'll get some pictures of students in the community and. A little background of the community, background of the school district.
Roy, will I be able to type the information that they can all see?
I'm gonna, do you use Google Docs?
I can.
You can either, I'll share the document with you, or you can come type on my. How about we do that?
Yeah, I'll just go over there and type. Well, I'm better with.
I typed it into such a Roy, because nobody can read my handwriting, including me.
I have the same problem with me. I used to be able to read my handwriting. My eyes are getting better, my writing is getting worse, so I'm sure which.
Part of it is, I don't write. Physically anymore, everything is on a keyboard.
I'm amazed at how bad my handwriting is.
Or my whiteboard, you know, then you get to write a four inch block, right?
No, we, we don't want that yet. First, you write down all the characteristics you can think of. Later on, I'm gonna ask you for your top five.
So you don't want the top five, yes?
I don't want the top five yet.
Alright, well, hold on for the top five.
Because your thinking may be spurred by somebody else's comment. Maybe somebody will have an idea that you like.
And as you know, the job of superintendent is multitask. I mean, there's many different, you have. You have curriculum instruction, administration, budget, public relations, morale issues, opportunities, special ed, budget and grounds. Management skills, those are all in. The nature of a superintendent.
Should you put that brochure where we do quarterly reviews? No.
No, that's, 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 that's just part of the process when you get.
And that's not necessarily what we might continue. No, that's another, there's another piece to that. Before, I'm, I'm not saying not. There's, there's a chance still, I think we can do, they're gonna make it even better. Or stronger.
Roy, I just sent you the town manager for sure, just so that there's community stuff you can glean from that. There's work we don't have to do. But they did a really good job here.
How many people have been involved in the process?
Um, there were nine of us on the committee. Um, one select board member not voting, two staff members not voting.
But the group made the, the decision.
We recommend, we recommend. We recommended three people, four people removed to the select board, and they made the final decision. And our U guys was a town manager from St. Albans. So we had another town manager from GLCT who was kind of running.
Maybe they have five town managers, seven years or something?
It's been, be that way. And of course, you don't even add the interns, right?
A plan.
Long-term person, just like, like end of career when I first moved here, and then. To a better. Had a fundamental disagreement with the politics in the town after a year and a half. So that left. And then, um, so another person who.
We wanna have the strongest.
Was a good fit in a different way.
There are good, there's a lot of things that go into it.
Um, and so it was just, it just kind of, every two years, we were kind of.
Hopefully this person's gonna put his roots down.
We, we hope so. We hope so.
If you're listening, yes, please put your roots down. That's tough, I mean, that's how you, how you, it's like super, I've had some districts where they've had. Multiple, because of some board issues or they, I had, when I was in Santa Barbara, um. Nine usually had six superintendents. And it was politics and not a match. Luckily, I was high school principal, so more problems I've had, the better I was, better off I was.
I didn't know that there was really any turnover. Like, I grew up, my parents were teachers, I'm the same superintendent my entire childhood. Uh, my high school band teacher is now the superintendent in my school district when I grew up. So it's like, it was like a thing, like. I didn't even know that, that's just, you got promoted to do that, right?
Well, see, I have a document there, Roy, can I type you?
What's that?
Right, your document disappeared now.
Yeah, I just gotta get it up in. I turned it off so that people could see people speaking.
I can easily go over there, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, come on over there.
Come on down. Just like the pressure.
Did you carry?
Do you need more time or are you all set? Do you need more time or are you all set?
I'm going to the gym, that's kinda why.
Okay. I didn't understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
It sucked.
Fair enough. I, you know, I, I looked at that and I'm going like.
Oh yeah, but I wanna do that too, but it's.
You know, why didn't they put? I mean.
Why do you wanna, so why is that you just like that?
We don't have a center of place.
Let's get rid of that.
Okay, he does round robin.
Okay.
But you have it too.
Yeah, I've got it too.
Just there.
If he's not round robbing, yes, I'll just cut and paste it in.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Schedule.
Yes.
I mean, it's one thing if we collaborate and use them, let's have a meeting that like.
It's like a dating game. Give a board with a personnel and a district with a personality needs, we have these cats that are.
Lead us off, what's your first qualification?
Vision.
Visionary.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it's nice to see and. A visionary.
Alright.
I wanted him or her to be able to think outside of the box.
Okay, what's next? Yeah, the slide point one. I communicate. Okay.
And I didn't really put them prioritization, but I guess.
Well, we'll get.
Strong administrative skills.
We're gonna. Waiter.
What did you say?
I'm in a strong administrative.
Alright, Sarah.
Consensus builder.
Devin?
Strategic. Mining.
I'll use an old term because I'm old and I used to work on HR. I wanted to be an active listener.
It's not old, that's, that's, that's new.
Is it still new?
Yeah. Cause that should be.
There's lots of workshops.
Visionary, visionary, you said? Okay, that's already been said. In fact, it's something, you, you see the comments, right? Well, it's something that even said, there's no need for you to say it again, but you have something else? A dreamer, a dreamer, okay? Alright, next.
Uh, so this was a sub category of one of the, so I had said strong interpersonal skills and then below that I wrote. In all caps, able to delegate. Delegation skills.
And that's an art form.
Otherwise you'll sink.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, Sarah.
Um, I want a leader versus a specialist. Um, I may need to explain that more, but.
We'll come back and get clarification in a minute. Versus a specialist, okay? Kevin?
Fiscal strength.
Alright.
I want someone who can show mutual respect all the way down to the. Janitor that stays up here all night, sweeping floors and mopping the floors and cleaning all of them.
Alright. A people person. Hey, next.
From ethical center.
Yes.
Sarah?
I'm interested in school-town collaboration.
Okay, Kevin? Alright, let's, here's what we'll do. If you can't think of something at the moment, no, 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 I was, I was crossing my list. Okay, but if you can't think of something at the moment, simply say pass. I'll go to the next person and we'll keep going around until everyone says pass.
Uh, strong. K twelve experience. I should say pre-K, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Alright.
Because we, we operate on one of the.
Alright, next.
A team builder.
Alright. Go ahead. I don't know what you call it, special ed? Will you get it?
No, no.
He hasn't said it.
It's collective, you got it.
Alright.
I, I, uh. So what I said was good political ethics, by which I mean able to pick up onto the player in the town and the school district. And what local state issues are. So not the. Politics, not the job politics, but the.
Environment.
That all pile.
Sarah?
Um, available to parents, students and staff, so maybe open door.
Accessible.
Accessible, there you go.
Kevin?
Uh, mentor.
That's a good one. Mentor to who? To administrators?
You know, his, his team, you know, and that could be just about anybody. You know, and if he's a good mentor, that'll, that would permeate the whole district.
Alright.
Pass.
Okay, pass. Yes?
Um. The problem I had is. I had a different organization. I've got to figure out how to. And I'm not, so, so. I broke down what the characteristics was, the ones I gave.
Yeah.
And now I'm at the point where I'm having to choose among those or just say, some of these consolidate, so. Let me explain the issue and think how to deal with it. For strong administrative skills, I said, understanding the financial aspects, relevant HR rules. Project management, management experience, facilities management experience. Understand Vermont and federal educational law. So all of that goes into the package of what I think of as a strong administrator. And parts of that have been captured here already, the other ways, so maybe we need to.
What wasn't captured was understand Vermont educational law.
Yeah.
The other things were already said.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Um. DEI justice, restorative justice, non-traditional kind of.
Do you have a sort of justice here?
In some places.
Okay, I want to ask that question again.
No, but it's, it's there. It's part, it's part of the. The direction of education in the state of Vermont.
So do I have that right, DEI understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin?
Pass.
Okay.
Yes.
Those do what? Um, capable of self-reflection.
Yep.
My last one was uh, experience with tuition and public in the same environment.
Uh, do you have tuition students here from?
So we have tuition students, yeah. And that plays into the finances of the district, right? I mean, attracting tuition students is.
Right.
A big deal.
Alright.
You need to know those laws.
Yes.
Like they're changing.
State too.
Sorry. Hey, really?
You know where I'm at on that one?
See, right on, being that we're on the border.
Yeah.
The first interstate school district in the country. Is our next door neighbor.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And that in the country.
Oh, really?
And it was the last thing that President Kennedy signed before his assassination.
Wow.
Was the bill that approved. The Dresden School District.
And just Hannah or a Norwich, just to give you.
That's true. I didn't, I didn't know there was anything.
Capture in Vermont, yeah.
That's pretty cool.
So, so that's, that's pretty unique.
Very.
When you look at how that affects the two states. That same district happens to be the gold district. Of both states.
Hmm.
And part of it is because of the institutions that. My colleagues worked at, well, actually.
Have you done with?
And Dharma.
Yeah.
And Dharma.
And Dharma.
And Dharma. Okay, Kevin, anything else?
Um. A broad understanding of technical education.
Oh, thank you.
Since we have one.
Career tech type programs.
We have one of the sixteen.
You have a very appropriate, so, very good. Alright, they need to know how to run a chainsaw. Who is that?
In the fall.
Anything else?
Nope, that mine's all good, either they're.
Uh, work within the policy governance framework.
Policy governance framework. Okay.
Pass.
Kevin?
That's.
Pass.
That was everything. Um. Able to show mercy.
I want you to show mercy.
Have empathy? So. Just because somebody is guilty is all sin. Doesn't mean you forget that their human name was wrong.
Now, you earlier had, did you pass?
I did pass.
You earlier had said uh, PhD, is that one of your requirements?
I don't wanna say it's a requirement. Preferances, but I. It would be nice.
Can I, can I just add one that you haven't mentioned, which is, is, I shouldn't say this, but I am. Um, visibility. Is a big one usually for our districts, they, what they want the person to be visible to the community, to the schools, not just stay in.
I think that was a lot of what I was trying to say in what is now twenty. Um. Accessible, like I just, I, I want an open door person where I, as a parent, I feel like. I, it wouldn't be weird for me to speak to that person without jumping through all of the other. Or there's only reason I would do it is if something bad was going on, you know what I mean?
Right, I wrote able to easily and fluently communicate with teachers, staff, students and the community.
Yeah.
That captures several different ones that are on there.
Okay, let's take a look now. You've identified twenty-nine possible characteristics. Now. Some of these are similar.
Yeah.
Like a team builder, strong administrative experience, DEI understanding. So now you can't have a co, a job description with twenty-nine characteristics. But you can with five or six. So here's what I'm gonna ask you to do now. Take a few minutes to think about, out of those twenty-nine. If you had to come up with five. What would they be? And I'm gonna ask you to take your little sticky note.
Mm-hmm.
And write down. Number one, in the top corner, put down number one, number two, number three, number four, number five. And then simply write the numbers of each of these. You don't have to write them out, but let's say you want an active listener. So you put number seven. Let's say you want a consensus building, you put number five. And I'm gonna come back to you in about two or three minutes. And I'm gonna ask you for your top five. And then that will help us to build some consensus and on the top qualifications that we want.
So you just want one number on each of the.
That's right.
Each of these, right?
On each of those, one through five.
Okay. Can you hide the banner or zoom out one notch so we can see the full?
Yeah, let me make this a little smaller and then maybe we can get them all on one page.
Or on full screen, I think.
Yeah.
See if you go.
If you go full screen, I'll hide the banner.
Right.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, um.
Cause other ones.
It says full screen, is it not?
Uh, you can get rid of the, yeah, that'll all of that stuff up above. Oh, if you can. Yeah. Um. Roy, can you help them so that it's not showing the form adding choices and everything? I believe it's the up arrow.
That window?
See if that. Um.
You wanna do that?
So. Um. There's a, all the way to the right, there's a little tiny cup arrow that's right next to the blue. I think that's it.
By the menus?
Yeah.
There, yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Getting closer.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make it a little smaller. So that it all fits on one page.
Did I not just say to this people that we're old? You want to make the print smaller?
So you need two columns, right?
Well, you can go stand up.
I'm only teasing.
Um.
Seriously.
I'm not. Like I knew glasses, did I?
Oh.
Alright. Number one is a visionary, so let's, let's look at the remaining twenty-eight and see those.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, words with this. With tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, here.
What are we with tomorrow? I'm speaking.
I can. Get it there a little closer, that's okay.
The ministry, district level administrators.
Yeah. Now, some of these might be combined.
Hmm.
You know, like.
Communication.
Visionary leader who's a consensus builder.
Right.
Something like that. We, we can find two in the wording, but you come up with the.
For us all people, can you blow that up just a fan?
Can I blow that up?
So.
I can blow it up a little bit, let's see, I'll go to.
So if we. If we said like. We have one number. Okay, so we're doing five, our top five. So. Our number one. Might be a single item. But. Do you want us to do like, if we can see some synergy here and go. Uh, number two is. Four, seven and six, or would you rather have us?
Let's just go one through five and then we'll see about.
We can work with it.
Okay.
We can work with it.
Cause it, it'll probably show itself.
We can do that tomorrow and probably give you a copy by tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah.
Oh. We work fast. So we're missing a couple of the.
We're missing, um, let's see, we're missing. Possess a doctorate degree. I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll combine these a little bit. Able to show mercy, I'm gonna combine with um. A consensus builder, about that.
Okay.
I, I take that with ethical center anyway, so.
Um. Possess a doctorate degree, we'll put with understanding of the law. And working in policy governance. We'll put that um, strong K through twelve experience. Right now, let's see if you can see them all on one page. No.
Almost.
Broad understanding of career and tech head. Let's put that on um. And special ed knowledge, it's not the same thing, but it shows.
Standardized knowledge.
It shows broad knowledge of. It's more. And a visionary, we'll put down.
Leader, leader, eight.
Number eight, okay, good. Right now, we should be able to see all of them. You can. Right now, we've got twenty-five.
How about that, eighteen? Alright.
Tell me when you're ready for your voting.
A couple of weeks ago, did you get my? Now, was it a change session that I looked through?
Oh, really?
Alright, Kevin, you get first vote. What's your number one?
Um, twenty-three.
Twenty-three. So we're gonna put. A number one next to that. Right, what's your number?
Number seven.
Number seven. One. Number one, there is no number one anymore. Number one, there isn't a number one anymore.
It went to eight.
With eight.
Went to eight, okay. Right, what do you have?
Uh, four.
Number four. Okay, so.
Three.
Alright, Kevin, number two.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Uh, we moved twenty-six to somewhere we moved it.
Is that the C T one code?
Yeah.
C T one.
Number twelve.
No, K twelve.
Okay, twelve. Next one.
Twenty-two.
Alright. Sixteen. Sixteen. Alright.
Fourteen.
Twenty-three.
Kevin, number four, twenty-four.
Fourteen.
Twenty-two.
All three.
Three.
That's four.
Four, so three.
Nineteen.
Kevin, number four.
Uh, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty-four.
Twenty.
Kevin, last one.
Four.
Ten.
Ten. Eighteen.
Nine.
Nine.
Ten.
Alright. Number five. Okay, so let's look at what we've got. We don't have a lot of consensus.
Aren't we gonna be easy to work with? Although, a lot of these are things I think can be.
Yeah, so strong communication skills and.
We could do this.
Uh.
Active listener.
Active listener, I think could be joined.
Yeah.
Which one, wait, tell me that again?
So, two, I mean, sorry, three strong communication. And, uh, active listeners number seven are parts of the same skill set, I think.
Me too.
Wait.
In six, now it's number six.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
I think three and eight are the.
Yeah.
Yeah, two more. Had that to before.
Okay, what else can we combine?
Merge three and eight.
Three and eight, uh.
Administered skills and delegation skills.
Yeah.
Would you say fiscal would go with that as well?
Yeah, I would put, I would take that still under administrative skill.
See, we do have a lot of consensus.
You're in the ballpark. There are aspects of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pre-k experience, work governance, uh, special ed.
Yeah, thirteen and fifteen could be.
Yeah.
If wordsmith dwell.
Yeah. Policy governance framework though really has.
A whole different ball.
It's a different thing, it doesn't really belong there.
I agree.
Uh, yeah, that one I would pull off and. Um, put it in its own back.
No, just put it in a separate area.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um. I put twenty-one and, uh, three, et cetera, et cetera, together. Public financing with administrative skills, delegation.
Fiscal skills.
Yeah. Uh, and I could even, so, number twenty-one, number eighteen. And. Number. Three, also to go together, they're all in my mind.
Administer.
How do you do the administration? So you need to know our laws, you need.
Being a superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, I'm gonna dive into it just a tiny bit, cause I, Nancy agreed with me, the leader versus specialist for me also really falls into this administrative skills. But it's very specific around, um. Being able to, and maybe if even the delegation one, being able to find the subject matter expert appropriately, rather than trying to be.
Good for us.
The subject matter expert.
Definitely.
Like, that's what I'm looking, I mean, as a project manager, that's my entire job, right? Like, I'm never the expert. But I need to find those experts and get the information that I.
I tell people who work for me.
Yeah.
My job is not to do your job, my job is to enable.
You to do your job, exactly, yeah, and I, and that, I think is a. The more A I takes over and the more, um, like, free information takes over, being a specialist is. Can be gotten.
Yeah.
Being a leader is a, a skill.
Yes.
Now, look at what we've got, we've got a little bit more consensus now.
So why don't you remove all the ones that didn't get a.
Any votes, right?
Okay.
That will make it easier, because you can then. Increase the size of the. Uh, of the font, cause the, the list would be much shorter.
Nancy, like consensus builder totally goes with that administrative.
This is enough right there to work, work something good.
Yeah.
This one. I could remove, but it. Well, it was mainly number two, really, strong administrative.
Yes, we were thinking about you got there with two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The strategic and the outside of the box thing are both really in that one as well.
Did we put it up with two? Uh, see, see, that, that pre-K twelve piece is critical. You know, for an educator in this state.
That's, so that's part of six then, right? Understanding of career, special education, pre-K, like, that's.
And put, yeah, so put P K, uh, through thirteen and that.
Cause that would be all of the specialty. Education stuff.
Right, yeah. What's your total student enrollment for this district?
Uh, seventeen something right now.
Seventeen, eighteen.
What is it?
Uh, seventeen.
Seventeen hundred or so?
The, the, the reason why there's this thing is with the new waiting system, some. Actually get counted differently. So.
It's a state, it's a state thing? It's a state of homage? There's the actual number of bodies and then there's the. Equivalent numbers of students that they use for purposes of. Evaluations. Yeah, you don't wanna play with the waiting game.
It's, it's one of the most unique financing systems in the country.
Alright, so these two have lots of votes. Have four votes apiece. The others have. A lot of them have two, two or one.
I think you can probably combine some of them.
We can, we can wordsmith everything up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, so let us work on that and. Um, yeah, tomorrow morning, we've got, well, tomorrow, like, ten o'clock or ten thirty, we've got some time. Bob and I will. Refine this into statements like you've seen in those brochures. The Board of Education is looking for someone with these qualifications and will work all these into it. You can send that, Kevin, Kevin, are you able to look at this tomorrow after we finalize it?
Yep, just give us your blessing to do it.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll wordsmith it, send it to you for your approval, and then that's what will go in the brochure. That will send you as well. Well, I mean, you, you work on the brochure, we'll plug that in at the appropriate time when, when you're done with the brochure. And we'll put it on the advertisement for starting next Monday, the fifth.
Okay, for this group, the, the brochure information. If they give you pictures, the content they're hoping for, and, and this wordsmith. Does, does the, is your company then?
We put it together.
Yeah, put it in, so as long as they have. Basically, the core content you need, alright, I just, that's what I'll gather from that.
But you or whoever you're working with really are the prime authors of the column. And we'll make it look pretty.
Yep.
So if you have some particular school colors, you know, make sure you pass exactly what the colors are.
Usually the brochure goes to the district colors or school colors.
Oh, got it.
You know, find pictures.
There's a stylized hurricane light swirl that is the official seal of high school.
Well, and the elementaries have adapted to look.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, one of the things I want, I do wanna bring forward on number ten, which is the D E I understanding, is that the town and the school district have an active strategic plan in this area. And I think that that is key information for this person to have, so it's not developing a D E I.
Right.
It's like, we are, we are in, that work is in progress, we have a strategic plan that has been, um, developed since twenty twenty-one.
You have any joint facility issues?
There's a lot of back and forth facility sharing with parks and rec and like, our normal meetings are at the town hall.
If they use your pools and. They use your pool.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of co. Co-usage there, that's probably one of the least contested. You know, things that we do is take care of the kids that way.
No.
Some of the other things.
A little more contested.
But like, one of the suggestions out of that strategic plan was that the town and the.
Give some thought in collaboration with your colleagues of how you want to identify the stakeholders. So that you can get that squared away ahead of time and people know these dates that we talked about and they can plan ahead of these dates.
So what we'll, what we'll do is we'll take, we need to take a look at that, that chart. And. You know, decide. You know, the magic number. Uh, you know, do we go with the same number that we use, three, 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 all of them, or that, and we do two, 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 or, or whatever. Uh, it's, it's that. Simple, actually, a process. Um, you know, do we go with? Eighteen. Or do we go with?
Well, I don't wanna do eight too.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That would be determined by three or two.
Um, Kevin, can I make one more suggestion to you is that. We can always, I mean, sometimes people ask us to do, to offer the invitation, write the invitation to the people to invite. I think it's much better if you as a board do that, because it's your community, they wanna see you inviting them, not an outside third party inviting them. I think it's better if you. We can help you with the draft.
Right.
But it just comes from, from the board, to the community, we want your input, we want your help, et cetera.
And, and that's, and that's the, the key to that, to that number. Uh, even when you see the, the categories. They're, they're the same ones that are recommended, you know, they're used by every search committee, you know, and hence it's basically. That size that changes.
You know, say, that was a nice first move, so appreciate your, so attention and time.
Is there anybody out there in, uh, public land that? Needs or would like to. Have public comment.
I don't see any hands up at this moment. Oh, I do see a hand up. Mary Gannon, has a question.
Well.
Uh, I don't, I don't have this goes to, uh. Oh, I guess I do have that. Hi, Mary.
Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everyone. Um. Thank you for, um, this work. I know this is, um, a long process and. These types of searches right now, as we know, are challenging finding. Uh, candidates, one thing I just wanted to do a quick shout out, and I'm sure many of you won't be surprised. Um, and just to identify myself, my name is Mary Gannon, I've been working with the town and the school district, um, since. Twenty eighteen, I think somewhere in that vicinity, and Sarah, you said twenty twenty-one, that feels like a long time ago.
No, that was the final implementation, we got recorded twenty twenty and.
That's right. So I just wanna, and thank you, Sarah, cause I heard you several times tonight, um. Um, talking and speaking directly to. The work of equity and educational equity as a priority for you, and I know it is for the board, and I just felt like I needed to. To echo that and also, um, really center it in this conversation, because I think. Again, given that this district has been out in front with. A strategic plan with a D E I coordinator position with incredible staff. And community members who are really moving this work, I just really wanna encourage you. To, even as you're looking at the other characteristics that were generated. Tonight, to think about this, how we center equity within those. Characteristics as well, and I'm sure that other stakeholders. Um, who many of I know will be involved in this process will also be stating that. And again, I think, you know, we can talk about it in lots of ways, and unfortunately, the language of D E I has been, is being sabotaged right now, but I even think about someone who. Understands what it means to create a community. Where all students. And staff feel like they can bring their full selves, and I think we really want a leader for the district. Who, um, exemplifies that, so thank you, and I'll, I'll be here to support, but also listening.
And see, actually, um, this. Technical work. Started in two thousand fifteen. There was an event, there was an event in town that basically was the catalyst. And we won't talk about how long before that we started, but the actual, what, explosion. Uh, in our community happened in about two thousand.
Can I ask a general question too, is there anybody inside this district? That may wanna apply for this job? Just wondering.
I don't know.
You know, all, all are welcome.
Some might run from it. I think that, um.
Point.
The school, the, the school staff. The teachers and, and the, the office. Um, people in the schools, um. Are not eager, but they are anxious.
Hmm. That's a good distinction.
To, uh, to get that, to get this going and to see. Who the candidates are gonna end up being, and they are very eager, I will change from anxious to eager, they are very eager to share. What.
Well, tomorrow.
What they know.
I'll meet the elementary teachers, Bob will meet the secondary teachers, we'll both meet with the administrator.
Good.
So we'll ask them those four questions that I told you about.
Good.
Which will also be on the webpage, right? So that anybody who can't get to one of those meetings can enter that information that is up there.
It's also very normal for anxiety.
Yeah.
Um, with staff and teachers, when a new person comes in. Um, I mean, we've had a person here for a number of years and there's a very comfortable environment. And a new person comes in, there's always, and we talk about, we'll, we'll address that, there's some anxiety. Normal anxiety. So, or even, there isn't comfort, you'd rather have the devil we go than the.
Roy, if you have it, or Kevin, could you send us a list of the email addresses of all the board members? We'll eventually need that. Okay.
And how many years you been on the board too? We know that.
You have that memory? No. Um, if each person just sends me an email from your school board email address with your num- years of service, I'll co- I'll collect that and give it to them.
Okay, that actually, yeah, that's.
That's the easiest, yeah, yeah, you got it, okay.
A computer approximate number, it's like. Ballpark. We're also gonna ask each individual board member the same four questions too.
Really? That's good.
Give you opportunity to have your own individuals. Okay.
Boy, it's my personal, which ferry you take?
I take the Grand Isle ferry.
My mother-in-law lives less than a mile from that ferry. Yeah, I spend a lot of time on Grand Isle. The Plaxbury. Our Fourth of July, the Grand Isle, our Third of July. She's in Grand Isle, but.
Can we have a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Non-debatable motion.
Thank you for your work, folks.
Thank you.
Great job.